Public schools to order. And per, I know, got to read this whole thing. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting, but it can be viewed live on Zoom through the link that's posted on the agenda and then also streamed live on Channel 14. And a recording will be made available through our YouTube site. Melissa, do you want to start us off and read our mission statement?
Yes, I would love to. I just have to read it.
Yeah, throw those glasses on because you know we can't see.
Well, I have to read it from my phone because my printer is not behaving. I think it checked out. Okay. The Falmouth Public Schools' mission. The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Falmouth Public Schools' vision. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as well, excuse me, in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks Sharon for putting it on there so that we all have it right in front of us and can take turns reading it without having to go hunt it down. So, given all that's going on in the world, I thought it appropriate, even though it's not listed on our agenda, to start us off with reading the joint statement that came out last week from the schools. Then No Place For Hate, the Town Manager, the Select Board Chair, and Chief Stone and Small. And so pardon me if I stumble, but it's really long and I think it's worth it. As leaders in the town of Falmouth, we write to share in the heartache that's felt by our community due to recent unacceptable hate crimes, acts of brutality, and ongoing injustice in our country. We denounce these events and extend our support to all of our Black and Brown friends and neighbors in our community. Over the past few months amidst COVID-19, we've been more deeply reminded of the inequities and disparities within our community and nation. We recognize the need to address these systemic inequities and call upon our community to join us as we seek equality, peace, and respect through our words and actions. We have not overcome disparity. The lives and stories of Christian Cooper, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, George Floyd, and the many who came before demand that we break our silence and have honest conversations about bias of all sorts, including racism. At the same time, we must remain committed to recognizing and uplifting the good in our community. We must continue to embrace our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion to break the cycle of racism and other forms of oppression. Now more than ever, this is the time for us to open our hearts and minds, listen to one another, make amends, nurture relationships, and stand united together in solidarity. As we ponder what's happening in our nation, let us turn to our own community and ask what we can do to address inequality. So Lori, thank you for taking the initiative. I think it was probably your idea, I would guess. And I really appreciate it because it's such an important thing. And thanks for humoring me and taking a moment to read that this evening. So anyone that might have the agenda might see that we did not come back from executive session. We canceled that and we'll do it next time instead. But so we can go right into public comment. Oh my gosh, my cat is knocking everything everywhere. So please limit comments to two minutes per individual to items not on the meeting agenda. There's no public debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take the items under advisement or the individual may request it to be placed on a future agenda. And I don't know if I know how to see, do I have the ability to see that?
You do, but we do not have any hands up for public.
Thank you. So first after that is an update from the superintendent. So I'll turn it up.
Thank you, Kelly. So a few things that I just want to update on some guidance. A couple of meetings ago, Natalie had asked about the student engagement during the remote learning. And it's kind of a difficult question to answer because it kind of ebbs and flows, right? There's times where students are more engaged than other times. But about the time when you had asked, we really had almost every one of our students engaged other than a portion of the population of the high school, but really at the schools. And we keep working at it. I think I've mentioned several times that, you know, our teachers and our principals just don't give up and our counselors constantly trying to reach students and having them engaged. Since then, it's waned to some and we still have some schools that still have almost 100% participation. But in a couple of schools, we've noticed that it's kind of sliding off and I don't know if that's the warm weather. I know that in typical school years, when the weather gets warm, it's, you know, difficult to keep students engaged when we're in the physical space. And certainly it gets more difficult, I think, in this environment when we're not face-to-face to keep students engaged. So we have some, you know, some slide, I think. At Morse Pond, I think, you know, we have two or three students that were struggling to keep engaged per team. We may have, I think, just about five students at Lawrence that we're constantly reaching out to and trying to get engaged. And there's just a few at the elementary level. The high school is different. Principal Gans has recently shared a story that she did collect all the names of the students that either weren't engaged or that just minimally engaged, I guess, you know, we would say. And reached out and contacted the parents. And of course, some of the parents were like, we thought they were working every day. And because it's so much more independent and students are independent. But the school saw a big rise in engagement after the parents were contacted. And that was a few weeks ago. But I think that we're going to have a more difficult time in the next two and a half weeks of keeping students engaged, although we're continuing to try. And even when I say that, you know, the low numbers, you know, at the schools, students are engaged more in some subjects than other subjects, right? There might be students that are engaged in fully and maybe math, but maybe social studies they're not, or engaged in social studies, but maybe not so much in ELA or some of the specials. Students may really love, you know, the arts and then some may not be quite as engaged. And so it does vary per subject and it varies per student. But I think that it's a lot to be proud of, of the amount of engagement that we've had in Falmouth Public Schools. So I hope that that was somewhat helpful, but it's a moving target day to day, Natalie. So we wanted to get some information out to everybody about the engagement. Summer School Guidance. We will be sending out invitations soon for the Summer Learning Academy. Again, the ESY and the Lawrence Program and the high school programs will continue to engage families like they have in the past. But the Summer Learning Academy is new this year and we are purposely engaging students in the Summer Learning Academy due to the spring and the concern with some of the gaps that may have been created and making sure that we can prepare our students for when they get back into school in the fall. We are looking at, now that we've got the summer, the initial summer school guidance from the commissioner, we are looking at, since it's approved, we can actually have some in-person and some remote. So we will be able to bring in some students. So that will be a decision for some parents to decide whether they would want to engage in the Summer Academy, number one, and then number two, the remote setting and the in-person setting. We do have a concern with the transportation and we will be reaching out in the invitation to see if parents would be able to transport, if at all possible. If not, Patrick's going to do his magic and try to get the students in school for the in-person portion of it. So we have a lot of details on that to work out to make sure that everyone's safe and that we're following the guidance as required. So preparing for next year, I'm going to ask, I mentioned in my letter that we have some professional development days for our teachers. Getting ready for next year, I'm going to ask Dr. Tellier to speak about that for a couple of minutes.
Oh, you're muted. She never does that.
Yeah, it's because I have the two computers going. Sorry about that, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. So on the next two Fridays, as Dr. Dora said, we're going to be offering professional development all focused around building digital classrooms. As we talked about previously with the spring, for many of us, it felt like the first year of teaching again as we had to redirect our attention and really rethink lack of social interaction in the physical space and move it to the virtual space. So for the use of Google Classroom from pre-K to six and then the use of Schoology from grade seven through 12, we're going to be focusing in around the creation of virtual or digital classrooms that will lend themselves to the remote learning while we're away and will support blended learning when we return. Through the access to technology and resources, we'll be able to record and save instruction that happens in our classrooms in video libraries. We'll be able to remain connected and we'll be able to start to reintroduce group work, even if students aren't together in the classroom through the use of the tools within these digital classrooms. We're going to really be able to better provide for the structure and consistency in the look and how we introduce the navigation and orientation to these tools. We're going to be able to restore the rigor that we, you know, really understood to be part of the hallmark of education in Falmouth when we were in person, but bring that into this blended space and increase engagement. Ms. Dr. Dora was talking about engagement levels. Now, we want to restore our full engagement level and keep our learning on pace moving forward to meet the expectations for content and for skill development. The professional development, which we're going to engage over the next two Fridays, is not the only professional development we'll have to get ready. It's part of a short-term focus and beginning to orient ourselves towards the reopening, but it's also part of a longer-term vision for supporting teaching and learning in our students. And it's going to allow our students to manage their pacing, both while they're in session and when they're at home by being able to replay lessons, being able to access discussion boards and share thoughts. But it also opens the door to accelerated learning and it opens the door to personalization. Students will have weekly agendas, weekly outlines. We're working towards the idea of something a little bit longer, like a syllabus where they can understand over time what they're driving towards. But the means of achieving that may be a bit different as we work in our differentiation. So it's a starting point. We definitely, you know, two days is not enough to realize everything we'd like to. We're trying to work in some additional afternoon drop-ins and think through our summer and reengage in the fall and the opening days with our choice professional development led by teachers. And much of this professional development that we're planning for the next two Fridays is also being led by teachers and administrators in our departments and at our grade levels who have been working in both of these platforms and able to bring that forward and support their colleagues. So thank you very much for the opportunity to share.
Can we do questions first, just for Sonia? Okay. Are there any questions? Terry?
So isn't Schoology a new platform for many teachers?
Yes. So our Tech for Learning Steering Committee made a decision about a year ago after evaluating multiple learning management platforms to move to Schoology. And we've spent some time, especially within our curriculum council and our instructional leadership, looking at the comparative difference between Google Classroom as a course management tool and then Schoology as a learning management tool and making that comparison and building in supports to assist with the transition.
Well, it seems to me that this is adding on another layer of things to learn when doing remote learning. And I mean, I presume you've researched it and it's got better functionality than Google Classroom does. But to me, it seems like you're adding another load at a time when people are floundering. Well, the floundering is stopping, I can see, but, and won't the students have to learn how to use this new thing too? So it seems to me like it's a layer of stuff in the midst of still a little bit of confusion. I don't know. So when will the kids learn how to do it?
We are working on navigation and orientation that would be available to students either later in August or upon return to school. We need to build the classrooms first. And I appreciate, Terry, everything you're saying. And I spend a lot of time with our department heads in particular, who are building templates to assist with the migration of content from a variety of, you know, whether it's in the drive, on people's desktops, in their district server, to bring everything into one place and get it organized and coordinated so that we can launch the beginning of the year in a very organized fashion. So we're working hard to streamline that process to mitigate some of those pressures.
Yeah. Yeah, I've just heard a lot of, a lot of teachers thinking about tackling a new thing. But okay, well, thank you for your explanation.
Leah?
So I know we were talking about engagement and then we're talking about professional development right now for teachers. And I guess because I'm a school administrator, I know how stressed out teachers are right now. And just wondering about why it is that you're doing professional development right now? If you feel like it's a good time for teachers? Or if you're also feeling like teachers are a little bit not as engaged because fatigue is hidden and fatigue from, you know, being in a crisis, from trying to support all these students in a different way? So kind of to Terry's, to Terry's point of, are you going to get the biggest bang for your buck right now with professional development at this time with teachers?
I appreciate the question. One of the things that we've heard is the opportunity to take the lessons we've learned this spring and begin to front-load and organize content moving forward. And that's, that's not just coming from, you know, central office. That's coming from instructional leadership, curriculum council, different groups, grade-level leaders that come together and are planning and have been planning sometimes multiple times each week through the entire period of remote learning and trying to coordinate that so that they can make plans, both in some cases for continued professional learning over the summer and giving people the skills and resources they need if they want to continue that work. And then to also adequately plan for the beginning of the school year. Because the other part we're hearing is that the three days prior to the opening of school, one is designated as a professional development day. And having that one day, the week before school opens, also isn't enough to get things coordinated. So it's opening the door and sharing that, the information, the resources, starting to develop capacity and awareness and then allowing people the opportunity to continue to learn, should they choose to or want to take advantage of opportunities that we can offer over the course of the summer. And then the way that the learning is being designed is it's starting with recorded opportunities that people can play, pause, replay, re-watch at their own pacing so they don't have to be in a live session and they don't have to record a live session in order to be able to access that. We're trying to build that in a way that they can come back to as their readiness and time allows.
Can I ask a quick question? So I just want to clarify, you said one is a classroom management and one is a learning? So what's the difference?
So, so Google Classroom has a limited capacity. For one example is that it doesn't connect to Power School, which is our student information system. So it doesn't communicate with Power School, which means there's limitations in how we can assess and carry grades and information like that over, whereas Schoology and Power School are connected. They sync with each other. Some of the features within Google Classroom are better coordinated with each other and some of them exist discreetly. So it limits some of the functionality. One key example is the discussion board. We've done some digging. We've had a couple of people try discussions in Google G, Google G, now making it my own terms, in Google Classroom. And it exists almost like off on the side somewhere, whereas in Schoology, it's more seamlessly available as part of the primary features to keep the engagement and to keep students interacting with each other. So that was part of the evaluation that the Tech for Learning Steering Committee had been working on through the majority of last year. So it was actually, you know, a pretty solid assessment over multiple months prior to us even imagining that a pandemic could be possible. Never mind our reality. So it's bringing some of their work forward and in some cases certainly accelerating their timeline, but putting those resources out there and making them available to everyone so that we can create for our students and for our families a more consistent experience going into next year that really allows us to get back to teaching and learning more as we've known it, as opposed to how we've lived it in the past couple of months.
Thanks. Andrew?
Sonia, I'm glad that you mentioned that because having served on the Tech for Learning Advisory Group, as you're talking about Schoology, like I, having a little bit of a background with going through those discussions makes it all seem a little bit more doable because like Sonia just said, it had been a work in progress. So this wasn't something like we've just found quickly to be a stopgap. It was going to be rolled out and it just has been accelerated. But it has been vetted by, you know, a number of people. So I think that that's something that we can be very positive about. I guess what my question is, or I'm just sort of wondering, you guys have been working so hard to make all of this happen and putting so much effort into making this switch. And going forward, whether it's in-person, if it's blended, I guess I'm wondering how, we know a lot, and this is also part of the Tech for Learning team. We talked a lot about what education could look like, what are some of the things that we want to augment, we want to change? We hear all the time about how we're not doing a great job preparing students for this future that we have a hard time envisioning. And there's been a lot of thought and ideas around that. And so I'm wondering how much, or is there any of the discussion possible now to be talking about not trying to just get us through this crisis, but putting things in place that will move forward and address some of those issues with how we deliver education and be things that we've invested the time and now that will remain regardless of what the outside world looks like?
And I very much appreciate that. So we've differentiated the starting points based on people being able to access, navigate, and organize information. But then there's a couple of additional opportunities out there around the pedagogy, right? Understanding exactly what you're just saying. There's a bigger shift that's happening in education totally separate from the pandemic. I mean, it's just, pandemics kind of put a few other things, you know, a few parts of that in the spotlight, you know? And Superintendent Dora had shared with our entire faculty and staff a video message around the broader vision over time. And that's something too that we can connect to, but those pedagogical pieces, there are small parts of that that are going to be part of this spring and starting to be suggestive around that. And that's something that would come back out in the work that we continue in the fall so that we can be prepared in the short term for the response and the reopening in school, but in the longer term to realize that that vision and that work that that committee had started to bring together and continue to engage them in the forward-thinking, the design that continues well beyond this responsive action that we're currently engaged in.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Terry?
How national is Schoology? Is it, I mean, or do, let's talk Massachusetts. How many schools in Massachusetts use it, do you know?
There are several districts around us. We looked, there's at least one other large district on the Cape. And then we looked at a couple that were within our athletic conferences and others, you know, and just sort of started to understand how they used it, what their transition plan was. But it's, the very minimum, it's a national platform. And it's, again, it's tied in with Power School, which made it additionally appealing because it syncs with our gradebook and our student information system. But it's much broader than just Massachusetts or just our region.
And do colleges use it?
It's designed specifically for K-12. So when the Tech for Learning Committee was making its evaluation, it looked at several other learning management systems like Canvas, Blackboard, which were more designed for secondary and made the comparison to how they might serve our needs. But a particular feature of Schoology, and one of the reasons why there's a separation between pre-K to six right now and seven through 12, is that Schoology allows us to put visual imagery and visual tiles in place of some of the language for our elementary students also to be able to access information. It's just going to take a little bit more work of our Tech for Learning Committee to engage with our elementary teachers and find the right imagery. We didn't want to just force in images and have our students become accustomed to them, we had to try and change them out. So we're trying to build a mindful transition over the next few years to include elementary, which Canvas and Blackboard and some of the others, because they're originally written, like I said, for the college or university level, couldn't compare, they couldn't deliver that opportunity.
Thanks for all your information.
You're welcome.
Any last questions for Sonia? Lori, did you have other things? Because we sort of.
Yep, no, that's fine.
Jumped away from you, sorry.
Not at all. That was exactly what we wanted. Thank you. That was a good discussion. I just wanted to talk a couple of minutes about next year. So we have not received the guidance yet today. I got notice that it'll be in the next week or two for the opening of next year. So we are going to continue. We have our advisory committee. We have our different teams that are looking at different parts of what next year can look like. We're going to continue to problem solve, waiting for the guidance. We will, once we have the guidance and we have a plan, we know exactly what it is. We're going to put out a survey to families. I mentioned in my letter about parents being able to request, if they have siblings, if they want to request on the same week. So that request will come through the survey. I'm happy to take requests up until then. I'm keeping track. If it generates some discussion, which I'm very happy about. I mean, somebody's reading the letter and I appreciate that. But we do want to know and we do want to try to be accommodating. The reason for the request and not the automatic is that I've also received information from some parents that they might like to have their children on opposite weeks to be able to, be able to support them more. So I don't want to automatically assume that parents would want their children on the same schedule, although, you know, it could end up being the majority. But that's the reason why we'll, part of the survey will be asking families about what their preference is. And we will try to accommodate that to the greatest extent possible. We know that, you know, that could be a lot of help, especially if we're going to begin school in a hybrid. And I think that that's another key point that I actually want to point out, that the guidance that's going to come out is going to suggest a model on how, or require a model, I'm not sure how that's going to come out, require a model for beginning school, but that doesn't mean that's the same model that we're going to be in for the entire year. And so we are trying to plan for the beginning of school and that could change at any point. It could change that we're in full-time and it could change at any point that we could be completely remote again. I do think that it's going, that we're going to have to be very flexible with our plans. But planning for that, what we believe is a possible hybrid when we start. So we're looking for that. And so we'll be asking on the survey preference, once we have the plan, whether they would want to stay with full remote because I'm hearing from several parents that they would still like to have that option. And then planning for whatever the model that the state is going to share with us. And then the siblings and then also again about the transportation, whether the intention is to drop off and pick up or whether they'd be accessing the bus. Because all of that planning, we really need all that information in order to be able to plan for, you know, buses and school and all the safety, especially if there's going to be a class size or a bus size as far as numbers go. And we'll be planning all that. So that, once we get the guidance, once we know the plan, we'll be sending out a survey for our families to get some feedback so that we can continue to plan. The teams, the different teams and advisories are all working on, as I said, the safe plans, the, some of the concerns. I want to continue to. I want to continue to to be transparent in the my news, my email letters about what those questions are that we're tackling. As you can see, there's many questions. We don't have the answers. But I do appreciate people sharing the concerns and then offering up suggestions. And we are following through with those to see what we can do. And I know at the elementary level, as I said, the childcare is an, you know, extreme worry for many families. And we are looking at different models and what that could look like. We are wondering at this point whether the state will allow us to have some students in full time, even if if we need to have small class sizes. And then, and maybe others would be in a rotating schedule. But we don't know that yet. We don't have that guidance. If that's possible, we're certainly, we're already looking at space that we could use. And then the concern is, how do we staff if smaller classrooms, you know, almost possibly to, you know, double the size of the classrooms? How do how do we staff that with our current staff? Because, you know, at this time, I mean, there's just isn't within a budget for us to add staff. But we can continue to look at that and and see what we can do. But just, you know, just so people are know that the teams are working and trying to solve the problems even before we know what the models are and, but lots of good questions and lots of things for us to look into. We are even looking at, I know the Massachusetts weather may not lend itself for many months of outdoor, you know, learning, but can't, could we even have some outdoor learning to begin with? Even if it's on a rotating, you know, basis per class to be able to spend some time outdoors as well. So, because we all all know that outdoors are are safer according to scientists than the indoors and and that might be allow a little bit more flexibility. So we are looking at the different options. But continue sending emails and we will certainly take it. And I've been enjoying kind of getting to meet a lot, a lot of new, different parents through emails over the last few months. And so continue and offer suggestions and we'll make sure our our teams and our committees are absolutely tackling all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa, you are very patient. I made you wait, sorry.
That's okay. I think Laurie actually answered a lot of my questions. One of them was outdoor classrooms. I know that East Falmouth has an outdoor classroom that the amazing PTO put together. And I hope that we're able to utilize that probably more so than maybe we had in the past. I'm sure that other schools have that as well. I was also thinking of busing and I know that it's also probably premature, but like my kids are going to be at the same school next year. I I know that the guidelines was like every student, every other, but I would think that you could put sibs on the same seat in the, you know what I mean? So I just, I I know that we are bound by the recommendations and the requirements from the state. And I know that everyone here knows that, but I feel like we need to say that out loud a lot more because I I feel like perhaps a lot of people don't understand that. And I I hope that we can, with the guidelines and the recommendations from the state, can also make sure that it fits Falmouth and that if things do not fit our community, that we can look into what what that looks like. Is there a way that we can kind of tweak things with staying in the guidelines? I just, I I don't, I hope that the Commissioner and Dussey are not thinking that everything is just a one size fits all, especially in our very unique community. So I know that we're, this is all kind of fluff until the next week or two, but those are just my immediate thoughts.
Yeah, and I couldn't agree with you more. I certainly hope there's going to be leeway for some personalization per district within some broader guidelines. That's to be seen.
Laurie, do you know if there is, I I'm sure we don't know the answer to this question. I don't even know why I'm asking it. But if there is leeway for, you know, tailor tailoring things to the community, do those, do those decisions come from, is it something you implement? Or is that something that the school committee has to? Who does that fall on? If we, if we have to tailor, of course, the recommendation would come from you. But do you have any sense for whether or not we would be on the hook for that?
Yeah, I guess it depends on what it is. I mean, if it's operational, if it's some of the, you know, then it's just, you know, from, you know, my team at the at the district level. I don't know. It's a good question. We'd have to look at, see what, you know, type of things that we would want to do. I I don't know if anyone, you know, if we were to, I'm thinking, here's one, a decision that's a school committee. If we found additional classroom space and we were able to staff it and it would be outside of the school in which they would normally attend, it seems like that would be a discussion with the school committee, right? But if it's an operational on how many students on a bus or such, it seems to be that that would be more of administration. I don't know if that that's helpful.
Thanks. No, that helps. That's very helpful. Thank you. Leah.
So it's my, it is my understanding that this guidance document will be something that's very different. That's coming from our commissioner is that they are going to give us basically the models, you know, and we can have a little bit of flexibility, but we are, they're they're going to give us really most of our guidance around what we're going to do, which I I do appreciate that because it it is very hard locally to make some of these decisions and because they have a team of health experts and education experts making these decisions. But I I don't, from what my understanding is, and Laurie, correct me if I'm wrong about this, is that I think that most of the decision making will be made at the state level and that we will have a little bit of flexibility, but not much.
That is my understanding as well. But we we continue to get cautioned about making any assumptions and that they're still working on the guidance. And so I don't want to be, you know, definitive about how much will be from the state and how much districts will make decisions. We are now back to making, having weekly calls with the commissioner. We have another call on Friday, you know, so. But but because we're told to be very cautious about making any assumptions, even though that that has been, has been said, that this guidance will look different than other guidance, that this is going to be more requirement than guidance in a in a large percentage. But I just, you know, I I'm cautioned to put that out there and and then in two weeks it could change. They're still receiving feedback. I guess that's my my biggest point. They still have a, you know, the commissioners, and I'm sorry if I interrupted, Kelly. I, the commissioner still has his advisory committee and they're still meeting and they're meeting through the end of June. And so, you know, I would, I would think that as you're being advised on things that, you know, that what you're thinking could be changing and adapting based on the feedback you're you're receiving. So that's certainly how, you know, we would want to run our advisory committees is to, you know, discuss things and with new information or new new problem solving, you know, that things may change. And so I just want to be cautious. I don't know how much, what that'll look like.
John.
Yeah, I was just going to say if it's if it's anything like the guidelines for the businesses, I'm in the process of opening up and going through that process. And there is zero leeway with regards to what you could do. And to echo Leah's sentiment, you know, with the collaborative, that's the feedback that I get also. And and I think it is a kind of a welcome dynamic because you do have the experts in the group, you know, that they've come to those conclusions. And, you know, and I'd be cautious to over, you know, over getting expectations up from the community that we would be able to vary from that. And I mean, and things that might, that are, not might, that are, that are very reasonable, like siblings sitting next to each other. That's reasonable. But on the practicality implementation side, I would empathize with the bus driver that has everybody saying, you know, God bless every kid out there, but some kid might not be honest and say, yeah, this is my brother or this is my sister. And then the bus driver has to be the one to police it. So then, you know, we're adding it potentially another extra thing for them to do. And any other kind of variation that we might have in classrooms or whatnot would, you know, I would also caution that if we were able to kind of vary, to think it through, the the feet on the street people that would be implementing that, you know, if if it's doable or if you'd need to have, you know, badges or something that the kids would match up or something like that, you know, some kind of mechanism if you did try to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, John, I I totally agree with you. Here's what, here's what I'm hoping. I think that the guidance is going to, if I'm to guess, it's going to be very prescriptive on class size, you know, ratios, our protocols is whether we're going to wear a mask or whether we're going to, you know, the hand washing routines, things like that. What I'm hoping is that district to district, because I know our families in Falmouth want a complete 100% remote learning option, that they're just not ready to have their kids come back. I want the leeway to be able to opt, to to offer that. So that's where I'm hoping that they do, they may dictate a model of coming back, whether it's a hybrid, whether it's, whatever that might be. And that may, they may tell us when we can go further and when we may have to move back into a remote. But within that, would I also be able to have a 100% remote option? I'm hoping for that. I'm hoping that there'll be some leeway where we may be able to have our youngest students in every day. We might be able to work out a staffing model that we can do that. And if parents choose that, would we be able to do that here in Falmouth where it may not be possible in some other districts? So I don't know whether that would be an option for us or not. But I am hoping that here, in our context, that if that's possible and we believe that that's what's best for our youngest students, that we're going to be allowed to do it. So I guess I'm I'm trying to be cautiously optimistic that there will be guidelines that every district will need to follow. But then within that, that we may be able to have some personal, personalization for what Falmouth is able to do.
Natalie.
Hi, thank you. I have a two-part question related to the school reopening committee and the parent component of that. How often does the committee meet? And then part two is, for the parents not actually on the committee, is there an opportunity for them to voice concerns, give feedback? What is the best way to communicate their input as well?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. So we're meeting weekly. And we, but the the conversation, actually, we have a group within Schoology, the committee, and so we can have ongoing discussions. And, you know, they can put in additional questions between meetings. They can have the conversation. So I'm hoping it's it's set up more of a, like a blended style where we meet once a week, but the conversation continues. So a couple of different ways, right? Email me directly because I have been saving every email that I've get so that on Thursday, when we go to the committee meeting, I will be sharing the additional concerns. So parents have been sending them in. I've kept a list of everything that came before the committee started. And then I'm keeping the additional emails to take, and I've got several of those that I'm going to. Also, if if my email's hard to remember, the info@falmouth.k12.mad.us. If that's easier to remember, send it through that because we pick those up every day. And Sonia picks up the learning@falmouth if that's easier. So we're trying different avenues, but we, you know, so we pick up all of those. We try to respond within a couple of days. We do get a lot of, a lot of mail. And so I, we really are trying to to keep up in not only responding, but everyone just, you know, be assured that we are taking your information. You know, to, you know, when the principals meet, you know, my admin team, whatever committees, the advisory committee, so all of that goes to everybody to start thinking about and problem solving through and seeing what's possible.
Is there, I'm I'm sure that someone must be checking messages because I'm sure some people don't want to email. So if they just want to call-
It can, yeah, yes.
Do they just call the same number?
Yeah, call, yes, absolutely, because it's, we do have people in the offices now. We've been migrating back to the office. So, but the the phones have always been answered because they've been forwarded to to the home. So Sharon gets the admin number and she's been fielding concerns, questions and suggestions. And all of that gets passed on as well. So thank you. I should have said the phone call too.
Yeah, some people just don't like to email, so.
Yeah, no, we very get very few calls. Most of it is email, though, yes.
Bill, were you waving? There you go.
Yes, I would hope that the state gives you reasonable timelines because right now the state came out with something in Phase Two, talked about 10 students per classroom, teacher up to 12, and a variety of hand washing things and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now that's kind of, okay, we're not sure about that. Now we're going to update again. And I hope this is not a continuation of update every two weeks in the state because how many options do you have to have? So I hope the protocol from the state is, one, reasonable, which I hope it is. And two, we've looked at this enough with the committee and and all the educational facilities in the state of Massachusetts to say, hey, this is the way we want to go. This is the direction. And yes, I think you're going to have a lot of crossover. I think you're going to need a lot of options. But I hope the state gives you a timeline and at least an opportunity to devise things because it looks like it's coming at you fast and furious. And you need a lot of options in order to take care of all the things that are going to occur with the numbers and the concerns with space.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate that.
So I just had one other thought and, you know, like, like you mentioned about the survey, trying to get to which families are uncomfortable sending their kids at all next year, either because they might have a health issue or whatever. And I don't know whether or not there's a way to tease this information out, but we certainly wouldn't want families choosing between being uncomfortable and worried about health and eating because so many of our kids get their meals at school. So I don't know if there's a way to to figure that out or to, you know, make arrangements for that. Patrick, unmuted, so you must have an opinion. You got a plan already.
That's part of the survey, part of the survey.
It is in there. Okay, yeah, I, we just don't want people to have to choose.
Yes, no, and I will say that whether it's the remote setting, people 100% remote next year, if we get to offer that, we're certainly prepared to offer that. So, but as far as the food goes, they will still be able to have their meals. So that will not change even if the option is the 100% remote, nor would it be on the off weeks if we're, or off days. So I just, it's very important, just as Patrick has made sure that we have been able to set up food service through the summer. It's, you know, that is a priority of making sure that our students' social emotional needs are met, that they, and they get the food if that's what the family wants. So those basic needs, you know, should should not, should not be a concern and and we'll figure that, we'll figure that out.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Any last questions for Laurie or Sonia? Thank you. That was a lot, but a lot of information. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on. Next, we have our first read on the school committee protocols. So as you all know, because even though Leah's knew, she already did this and helped write them the first time, we put together our protocols that identify how we're going to operate as a group and our operations, how we're going to communicate and how we're going to make decisions. And then we all sign them. And so this is our opportunity to take a look at them. I don't know if anybody has any comments that they'd like to make now. Melissa.
Is there anything different other than the date?
Um, I don't think anything has been changed on this. This is the actual one from last year because I noticed it starts out with our old mission statement, so.
Okay, so we're going to adjust the mission statement and then is it going to be the same, like?
Well, and I think that's up to us, you know, if there are things that people, when they review it, think, you know, this isn't accurate anymore or we don't, we don't want to do this or this isn't, we said we're going to do it this way, but in reality, we actually do it a different way. You know, this is our opportunity to to edit them if we want.
Okay, I just, I don't have the other one next to me, so I was just asking at first glance if there was anything new that Leah put together is all.
No, this is the original one that- No, this is the original one that we wrote, um, I, I guess it's been going on maybe five years ago now.
I think so.
Maybe, maybe even six. So this is the original, but if we want to edit it, this is our opportunity to do so.
Right, I just, um, like I said, I didn't know if she, when you said that Leah put it together.
Oh, she helped us put it together. She would be the only, because she's our new member, she would be the only one that wasn't familiar, but she was actually here then.
She was here. That's what threw me that.
I'm sorry.
Something was different.
Nope, nope.
No, I know this is what we adjusted.
Um, Bill, did you have, did you start to say something?
Yes, I think it's a perfect time to look at our mission and vision because we spent a lot of time on adjusting that and trying to make it, uh, as, as good as we could. And I think we did a really good job on that, to initiate some of that into that initial statement, maybe not so much in the operations or anything, but in that initial statement, I think we can add some vision and mission things, and I think it's something we all could look at and look to make some revisions on that for next time.
I think, um, I agree with you, Bill, and I also am wondering, you know, uh, whether or not our core values should somehow find their way into some of this. I didn't, I don't, I have any suggestions, I'm just wondering if that's, you know, something that we should also think about trying to work in. Carrie.
So the mechanics of making edits or et cetera are, we send them to you?
I was gonna ask if somebody wanted to collect all the, the comments and suggestions. Since you brought it up, do you want to?
Sure.
Okay, great.
I'll put my money where my mouth is.
I appreciate it. So, um, if everyone wants to just take a look through these and then send any suggestions or if you have ideas of how to work maybe the vision, mission, core values in, um, and send them to Terry. John?
Yeah, this is, this is a comment on, on with regards to, uh, in our operations number seven, uh, operate respectfully and in accordance with common with the mass open meeting law and deliberations on which public policy takes while maintaining operational and executive confidentiality. If we could, in eleven of, in our communications where it says try to avoid surprises, uh, for the committee or superintendent to school meetings, if you could somehow kind of marry those two statements together, uh, because, you know, you don't, if you're avoiding surprises, you don't want to go overboard where there's consensus being done and other things prior, so have, have, how that balances with open meeting, uh, even if it's just next to each other where they appear, you know?
Yeah, that's fair. Any other initial thoughts? And, I mean, we'll have to, I don't know how, we're, we're not gonna be able to sign them because we can't have them all together, but we will figure something out. It'll be virtual, I suppose. Um, so, um, everyone will send their edits to Terry and then we'll look at a revised version next time, then. If it looks good, we'll approve it.
If you get them to me before, an hour before the meeting, which happens, um, I won't mention any names, Kelly, but, um, um, I'll try to print them up in a different color or something.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
All right, Terry.
Thanks. Uh, so next we have acting on our school committee meeting dates. So everybody should have, it's got the, mine's in purple. Uh, and it's just keeping the same schedule that we usually have. There are a couple differences, though. Usually we only have in the summer a retreat and one meeting. And, um, I ran it by Lori and she's, she didn't completely veto the idea of having us meet all summer, but there's just so much going on. I can't imagine only having literally one school committee meeting, it's just too much. So the main difference is that this schedule has us meeting on our regular schedule every other week through the summer. And if people can't make it because they're on vacation, they're on vacation, and, you know, we totally understand, but hopefully the business and the work can still keep going. And I think the only other thing that I noticed is that, um, the December eighth date, um, that's a deviation from our regular, every other, our first and, what is it, second and fourth Tuesdays, uh, because the fifteenth would have been during Hanukkah. So that's a difference, but other than that, I think the whole schedule is exactly as we're used to. Any comments on this? Andrea.
I know that we, um, I, I could see what you had there as the placeholder in November for town meeting and that we usually have something related to that. And I know sometimes it's convenience, but it's also sometimes there because we may need to act on something, you know, right before town meeting. Um, any thoughts on the upcoming June, um, town meeting and whether or not we need to do anything school committee wise for that?
Actually, I don't have the date. So we're, the town meeting is on Monday night and I, I think we meet the next day.
We do. Yes.
Right, so it's the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, and we meet on the twenty-third.
So I, I don't, um, and you're, so you're suggesting whether or not we need to meet before that? I don't know if, Patrick, do you know of any, there's such an abbreviated schedule, I don't think there's anything that we could possibly want to take a last minute.
Well, it's just, it's just budget thing, only the budget articles that are gonna be dealt with, but I didn't know if that was, I just, I didn't bring it up.
No, that's fair. I mean, we should at least double check and make sure there's no reason, um, if there, you know, if there's even the slightest chance that we would need to meet, um, we can schedule it, we have plenty of time. Lori, did you have any thoughts on that?
Um, no, and I, Patrick and I talked about it, we don't foresee that there's any reason that we would need to meet on any of the articles that's gonna be discussed, um, that night. I mean, unless you just want to discuss, we certainly don't have any action that we would need to take.
It would actually be really challenging because we can't gather, so we would have to somehow have the ability to do this and then, I, and so many of us have to actually physically be there to for town meeting, I don't know, it's gonna be complicated. Um, Terry, you had something?
Is it next week that the DESE is supposed to come out with some guy, some guidelines?
So.
When I, we're talking about meeting scheduling, we're, would a school committee meeting after they, after they come out be, because our, is our next meeting July fourteenth?
No, it's actually the twenty, June twenty-third, in two weeks, two weeks from tonight.
Oh, because I'm looking at the new schedule.
Yeah, we only have one other meeting spec.
Okay.
One other meeting scheduled on our last year's list, so this would be moving forward.
But it will be near when the DESE comes out, right? Right, Lori, is that?
Oh, originally they said the week of, um, uh, June fifteenth, which would be next week. But then today there was a, um, a message sent to the superintendents, it'll be out in the next week or two.
Oh.
So, uh, I'm not sure, Terry, I wish I, wish I could be more definitive on that.
But Terry, I think it's a really good question because once that guidance does come out, we're gonna want to meet and hear what the new regulations are gonna be and have the public have the opportunity to hear it and hear our discussion and hear Lori explain the, you know, the plan. So, I mean, what does everybody sense about whether or not we could schedule a last, I mean, not an emergency meeting with no notice, you know, still giving everyone ample time with forty-eight hours, but if, when the, when the regulations do come out, um, where does everybody sit about having a meeting, um, in addition to our regular schedule? Leah?
So my thought is, um, Lori's great about sending us things, so if, if we get the regulations, um, or the guidance document, um, I think that what, I mean, the administration is gonna have a lot of work to do around that. And I, I don't think necessarily right after those guidance doc, the guidance document comes out, is that, that's not necessarily the best time to have everyone asking questions. It might be, you know, having a, more of a plan in place first, um, some ideas to come to the public and share that and then get input on it. It's hard when we're, we're just waiting for this guidance document right now. I think that a school administration needs to digest it first. But I do think that, you know, just sending it to us, so as school committee members, we can be aware of what that guidance document looks like, um, would be ample for this.
And, John?
I agree with Leah a hundred percent, uh, you know, that, um, as engaged and supportive as all of we are, um, you know, uh, the folks don't really need our version of it right off the bat of, you know, they have, you know, Lori and her team to disseminate it and, uh, community is very intelligent, they, if they have questions, they can respond to them and, uh, and start that process.
Bill?
We also have had the opportunity in the past to double up. Just an example, uh, you could do, uh, July twenty-first and then the twenty-eighth. If you need to, if things are out in order and you want to monopolize the public as much as possible, we can do it back-to-back meeting. We've done that in the past. So I think that's an option. I don't think we have to do anything until everybody gets an opportunity to read it, and I agree with John and, and Leah without question, but I think if we do have to, we can double up and we've done that in the past. So I think those are options we can look at.
Terry.
I agree too about the administration downtime. I'm just thinking of the public that's, you know, chomping at the bit, and we could help unchomp it a little bit, but anyway. But we, we'll have a meeting if we need it, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, we can just defer, I mean, depending on where Lori and the team is at, if they feel like we need to have public, you know, have access to the information, then we can follow suit, depending on what everybody thinks we need. Andrea, did you have something or were you? I'm sorry, it's hard to tell sometimes. And it may work out that it, the guidance will come out and we'll have time and we'll have a meeting scheduled anyway, so we just don't, we don't know yet, we just don't know. I just wanted to see what everybody thought about whether we should have a separate meeting just to, to deal with that. Are there any other, um, concerns or comments about the meeting schedule for next year? Do we have a motion to approve the Falmouth School Committee meeting schedule? Melissa?
Make a motion to approve the Falmouth School Committee meeting schedule for twenty-twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
I don't know who that was.
Second.
Oh, Natalie. And that's a roll call vote. Natalie, we'll start with you because you're already unmuted.
Okay, Natalie Cannolopoulos, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
Terry?
Terry Mederos, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keef, yes.
Bill?
Bill Ryder, yes.
And I'm also a yes, it passes unanimously. Thank you so much and thanks for being willing to keep some of those dates over the summer. I know nobody wants to think about meeting, but I think we're gonna have to. Next up we have our, um, acting on the school committee subcommittee assignments for next year. So, it's a little bit different. Um, there were a lot of, not a lot, but there were a fair number of requests that were different from last year, so some people got moved around a little bit. And one of the things that's different is also that the main subcommittees, um, budget, policy and evaluation, um, all have four people on them now for next year. And part of that came from policy having four people on it last year and Terry's comment that, you know, not only sometimes is there a lot of work, but sometimes people can't make it and the work has to continue, you know, you have to be able to keep moving the work ahead. Um, and not knowing what next year is gonna look like, uh, and acknowledging that some people might not be able to make all the meetings, um, at least this way we'll still have three people, um, and be able to continue the work. So, um, are there any, oh, and the, the other thing was that there's no homework task force listed or fields advisory because the field is built. And any, John?
We got a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, subcommittee assignments for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Lisa. Is there any last, uh, any comments or questions about it? Andrea?
I was just, uh, wondering about the wellness, um, that it, it's a wellness task force, um, versus committee, and I know that that is, there's guidelines for that, and I was just wondering about the name on that one.
So if I remember right, it's that a task force can be created by the superintendent and it's not a standing committee of, um, through the policies of the school committee. So that the, the committees that exist as part of our policy, our budget negotiation, uh, policy and evaluation, and then anything other than that ends up being a task force or, um, an advisory. And that's the main difference. Does that make sense?
No, no, I totally, I understood that part of it. I just thought that there was, um, some guidance around the establishment of wellness committees.
Oh, whether or not, are, are you asking whether or not the wellness should actually be a committee?
No, because it's not a, it's not a subcommittee of the school committee.
Right.
So I agree with you on that, but I was just, um, in terms of the establishment of wellness committees.
Uh-oh. Am I frozen or are you frozen?
Of course, and can, maybe it's not even important. I understand that it's not, you know, a subcommittee of the school committee, but I just want to make sure that we're following whatever is our requirement.
Oh, I've got you now. It took me a while and I'm sorry, and, because I got frozen in the middle, so I missed a piece of what you said, but, um, it's okay. I think I, Leah, do you have an answer to the question?
Because, um, yeah, I mean, probably Lori has more of an answer to this, but I do know that there are some mandate, it's, it's mandated to have, um, a health and wellness committee. And so I think that that's what your question is, Andrea, around, because there are, there are regulations around that of making, ensuring that a school system has that. So it is a little bit different than our purview with, as a school committee, these subcommittees. So I don't know, maybe Lori has some more guidance on that, but there are, I know there are kind of legal pieces, legal regulations around that.
I think Leah's, uh, exactly right. But I, I don't wanna, uh, can I just look that up and send that back out to everyone, just so we can actually, you can see it in writing. Uh, I don't wanna, uh, misquote anything, but I, my understanding is the same as Leah's.
Yeah, me too. Exactly, so let's just revisit that and make sure that we, we're doing it right. Thanks, Andrea. Any other questions or comments about the assignments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, um, it's a roll call again. Natalie?
Yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
Terry?
Terry Mederos, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keef, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, that's unanimous. Uh, thank you guys so much, thanks for being flexible and, and moving around a little bit. I think it'll be really great. Okay, so next we have, um, discussing the school committee workshop dates. So, um, I know you don't have anything in your packet about this, but I just wanted to, to let everyone know that, so we usually have our workshop, uh, retreat workshop, whatever we want to call it, in the summer, and then we typically have a budget workshop as well in the fall. And over the last few years, we have talked about having more consistent workshops for things that come up, either trainings that we want to do or, um, you know, talking about agendas, whatever it might be, but we never have, it, we always struggle to come up with dates because we didn't put them in the schedule way ahead of time. So what I was hoping to do is set aside a summer ti, a summer date, that's probably one of the, uh, bookended with one of the meetings that we already have scheduled, so you don't have to pick a whole nother day. A date in the fall that falls within the budget, um, timeline, so we can have our budget workshop, and then at least one other one in the winter that we can, um, have set on our schedule on an off Tuesday that we know we're gonna meet and take on some of the other things that we just don't have time for, um, during our regular school committee meetings. And one of the things in particular is I'd like to make sure we have time in those meetings to talk about agenda items so that the full committee has an opportunity to weigh in, not just at the very end of each meeting, but also on things that may not always make it to the agenda. That's something that, you know, you might want to, to have us take on, so. So I need to get with, um, Lori to try and work out dates for that because her schedule is so much more challenging than, than some, than certainly than mine. And then, that was the, the, the goal of having this on here was to see where everyone was at. If that works, would you prefer to do them on a Tuesday that we're already meeting or an off Tuesday? What are your thoughts? Are there any thoughts? John, you unmuted, you got a thought?
Yes, uh, I prefer to keep it on the days that we're already meeting.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so be, uh, Melissa?
I appreciate you entertaining this. Uh, I know that I've been one of the people that have asked for, um, additional retreats, so thanks for talking about it, potentially we're meeting, and I'm with John that if we could meet on, uh, dates that we already have kind of set aside, um, I know that mentally that kind of works for me and. just thinking about logistics moving forward.
Great.
Everybody, everyone in my life knows that Tuesday evenings are kind of off.
Yeah.
Able.
That's for sure. Great. All right, thanks. Moving on, review and discuss the building use fees. And this was actually something that I had requested because when we updated our policy manual, there was a line in one of the building use policies that said that the school committee needed to review and approve the recommended rates for using the buildings. And I don't know, I've been here seven years and I had never seen them, so I figured we should talk about it.
My understanding, Kelly, is when I researched this is that you probably haven't seen them because they were wrote it on around 2010 and the rates have not changed. And we are not recommending at this time that we increase the rates. And I just want to make note that once we went into closure, we were no longer renting our buildings. And for any foreseeable future, we will, we will not be renting buildings at this time. So we're, this is what it's been for years and we are just saying that we would like to keep this as is. That's our recommendation. And then again, that we will continue to not rent the buildings at this time.
Are there any questions? Melissa?
Can you just break down? So the, the document that we have in front of us, so to rent an elementary stage and cafeteria, is it groups of 60 or more, or is it $60 for the group? And then groups charging an admission fee? So like if the PTO had Crooked Coast playing and they were charging a cover fee, because that's what happened. You know, I'm just kind of coming up with this, sorry.
But I want to come to this event.
Well, sometimes. So i- if you're charging a fee to get like a cover fee, then the PTOs or whomever then pay $90, but if it's like.
Patrick's got it.
A nonprofit, so like a Cub Scout, help me.
Yeah, so, so what, what, community groups, we provide support for them to do what they need to do. PTOs are, are obviously our most vital community groups or one of our most vital community groups. And, you know, from, from that perspective, it's really covering the cost of custodial, custodians, if there's additional hours needed for them. What we're really talking about is outside groups that have nothing to do with the community that are coming, well, nothing directly to do with the community that are coming in to, to sort of make money off using our space, right? So that's what we're talking about here. So don't, don't, I, PTOs, we're going to support PTOs ability to do fundraisers. Yeah, don't overthink that. Give me a call when we, when we get into it.
I'm not just thinking about PTOs. I was sort of thinking of like, so no, I am thinking about PTOs. So if a PTO wanted to use the building, would they have, what would their fee be? Just the custodial fee? Would it, and is there a minimum? I see it's $40 an hour, but is there a minimum of like a two hour with?
If we, so we can talk about this specific event offline if we have custodians in the building.
I'm just kind of coming up with it.
Okay. Yeah, we're, we're trying, we, we, we work with anyone who's calling in and try, try to work something out. Again, as the superintendent said, we're not opening up the buildings for, for groups anytime soon. But we, we've been doing this for a long time. So we'll work with your group to, or a group to rent a space when the time comes.
Okay, thanks.
Andrea?
I, I know that we're not going to be doing any of this anytime soon, but since this is the first time I've seen this, I just had a quick question about whether or not some of those fees were cumulative because you see things like the space, the custodial, the parking lot. Is that something that you, you add together for a group if they, you know, are needing the space, but they also need to use the parking lot? I, I was just kind of interested in seeing how that works in reality.
So we've had, no, they, they don't tend to be cumulative. What we, we've had, we've had people that are groups or whatever that just needed parking lots, that just needed space. You know, they have a large event and they have overflow parking. That's what, that's what that's for.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then I'm assuming that the, that like the turf field is not listed here, but that must have a separate or like sporting fields?
Yeah, we, and we have hourly rates for the people that need to support the turf field. Depending on what is being asked, whether it's just access to the field or in some instances, access to press boxes in a limited way, that kind of thing.
So I wonder if, if that schedule, if those should be added to this list before we, or is that a, are athletic fields completely separate? Because they're not technically building use.
Yeah, so the hourly fees are on the document and we're, we're, we're fine with the way the hourly fees work.
No, but I'm just wondering, since our policy requires us to approve the rates, do we need to add to this the athletic facility rates, things like the field or?
Yeah, when we open up, open up the facility to outside rentals, if we want to add a special fee for the, for the turf field, for example, we can add that and bring that to the school committee. And we've done the research already, looking at other districts and now they handle it.
John, did you have something?
Yeah, well, no, just a suggestion for that. We could, you know, moving forward, we could approve this document and then have it be, you know, the field subject to, you know, to be determined or something. So then that would, you're going to be able to make this document kind of address that a little bit. But no, I was just going to offer for down the road when it does come to fruition and we are doing it. You know, I'm going to, I'll reach out to Patrick because I could be a resource for setting up contracts and things for, for this nature of of room rentals and things like that. So I'll reach out to you, Patrick. That's right. So this document is what's been in existence for 10 years. So this is, you don't need to approve this. This just shows you what kind of hourly rates are there and in some instances, some, some facility rates. But not much is going on right now.
Right. Melissa?
So that was my next sort of question. Maybe perhaps we can table this, get a completed document. And then, and we would have the time that we're closed to assemble the additional lines in this document for the field, for the press box, for the parking lots, for whatever, however that looks. I don't know how broad we want to make it. I don't know how razor sharp we want to make it. I know that we like to keep things broad and Patrick, I appreciate your comments. That, you know, if PTOs want to come to us or come to you and speak with you, that, that should definitely be out there to PTOs. So that they don't, they're not intimidated by a big number.
Yeah. Andrea, did you have something?
I guess I just had a question for Patrick in terms of since we've had these numbers for 10 years and I'm thinking about where to put the effort right at this moment. It's how much approximately does this generate in terms of revenue for the schools each year?
So the revenue that it generates really goes to offset sort of overtime, right? That the custodians incur to handle an event. So that, that's really what it does. And it does, and it does that in, in a fine way. So again, yeah, we're, we're not renting out the turf field anytime soon. Last fall, when we did rent out the turf field, we covered our, our labor cost, right? We didn't, we didn't make additional sort of fixed money because it was a local community nonprofit that, with little kids who played football.
Yeah.
So, so that's where it's at, right?
I guess just in terms of, of, you know, spending time in the best possible place. I know you've got a lot going on. And if we've had these for 10 years and it's still covering our costs, then, and we're not renting anything now, that maybe this can, any further discussion of it can be postponed for another time when, when we see any changes that we need to make.
Yeah, the, this has been working fine and the processes that we use to, to help community groups or, or sort of whatever, local groups access our buildings have been working really well for a long time.
All right. Any last thoughts on this? Thank you. Thanks for, for getting it to us. It's nice to see at least what it's been for the last decade. Routine business, approving the minutes from our May 26th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Melissa? And is there a second? Natalie with the second. I had two small changes. There were a couple typos on the end of page two. Just abstain was spelled wrong and it's, and an extra L in favor. And Leah, did you have something else?
Yes, just, I wasn't, I wasn't in attendance, but Megan was. So just changing that to, changing Megan's name to me. But I think Megan is in attendance today too.
I'm sorry, you, you were.
I was labeled as there, yes.
Yes, I didn't even catch that. Yeah, Megan. So in the list of the attendees, adding, adding you, especially since you made it into the rest of the meeting minutes. Any other changes? Okay, so it's a roll call vote to approve with the changes in the typos for abstain and adding Leah and taking out Megan. Oh, everyone moved around my screen. Everyone's in a different order now. Leah? You get to go first.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Terry?
Terry Maderas, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Cannolopoulos, yes.
John?
John Fenari, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Bill?
Bill Ryder, yes.
And I'm also a yes, so it passes unanimously. That's it for routine business. So the last thing on here is a little bit different than before. I just sort of consolidated all the things that were at the end. So instead of having it all broken out separately, we just have report from the chair and committee members. So I think the only things that I had were to send the protocol changes to Terry. Oh, actually, I didn't mention this, but if you have ideas already for things that we should talk about at our retreat slash workshop, whatever we're going to call it, for the summer, because I know if anybody wants to have like someone present to us, if there's a topic, we would need to get that scheduled. So if you have thoughts or something that you want, you can send those along to me and we'll work on getting the dates for those workshops set. That's all I had. I didn't have anything else. Does anybody have any announcements, reports? John?
Just a collaborative committee report and, and moving to next year, I'm appreciative of, of the committee for having me serve on the collaborative. It's an impactful group and I'm, I'm really proud to be involved with it. And so we have our meeting tomorrow night. We have our election of officers. We're doing our handbooks, the transportation, employee and transportation handbook. Some return to school guidelines similar to what Dr. Dora had shared. We're going to continue the Bridgewater State Partnership and coursework to support licenses and special education. And we're planning for in some capacity, the November 20th all Cape in service. So I just thought I'd share that with people.
I'm sorry, John, what was the date for the all Cape again?
November 20th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Terry?
And the policy committee is still hanging in there. We're going to, we have a meeting, is it next Monday, Sonya? Yeah, we're going to be doing handbooks. See, so.
Never ending for you guys.
Moving away.
Any other member updates or requests or anything? Okay, so our next meeting will be June 23rd, but I will, many of us will see each other at, at town meeting on June 22nd in our flat sole rubber shoes. Melissa?
You stole the words. I just want to put a nice friendly public announcement out there to all town meeting members that potentially are watching or going to watch later, please wear flat sole shoes. Thank you.
Don't want to damage our beautiful, actually, do we, where's everyone going to sit? Are they going to, whatever, we'll work this out later.
Figure it out, Kel.
I know, it'll be okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
I don't know who that was. Andrea, thank you. Roll call. Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Terry?
Terry Maderas, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Cannolopoulos, yes.
John?
John Fenari, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Bill?
Bill Ryder, yes.
And I'm a yes. We're adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.